Good morning. Today is May 17th and we are having the committee of the whole meeting today. Today is, well, we are now off the 10 and so far we have every councillor including, I believe councillor New is in the building, so we have no regrets. So I'd like to call them into order. First is council announcements. I don't see any. I do have something to announce. This Saturday, May 20th, I'm proud to bring back Spring Fair, which has been a tradition in Richmond Hill celebrating since May 1849 and continue for 147 years. So this Saturday, the Spring Fair of 2023 will be held at Town Park, which is 43 Church Street South. If you Google, it's 102 Centre Street East. And Town Park is the place where the also Spring Fair was held since 1866 until it's discontinued. In any event, among the 10 good reasons, I will post on the social media websites, including a chance to learn about the history, the rich history of the Richmond Hill Spring Fair. And also that opportunity to learn about Ukrainian culture with a full hour talents from Ukrainian community. And also please bring non parish food item to the fair because I heard from and understand from the chair of the board of the Richmond Hill Local Committee Foot Bank, 3,000 people are using our local foot bank now. And because of the very generous support and fairies support from the community, they'll be offering complimentary food as well as ice cream. So please, while you're enjoying the fair link, non parish food item. And last but not least, also because famine oriented, there'll be children games and so on. So if people are wrong, I know it's long weekend coming up, then please come to the Town Park between noon and 3:00 PM. And I would say that this is particularly meaningful in the year 2023 when our city is celebrating 150 anniversary. Thank you. If no other announcement, I move on. Any introduction of emergency or time sensitive matters? Seeing none, could I have a member committee move for adoption of agenda? Councillor Sivilis, thank you. Any discussion? No, I'm going to call the vote. All those in favor. Carried unanimously. Okay. Any disclosure of community interest and general nature thereof? Seeing none. So any particular agenda topics that would like, any member like to pull out? Numbers, okay. First councillor Tree, which particular agenda item?
It is for 11 point, 11 point two.
11 point three?
Point two, sorry.
Okay, point two, okay.
Yeah, Majamak East Vashti, around 200 more than 200 townhouses.
Got it. Councillor Tree put the 11.2 and also councillor Michael Shu, you also have a hand raised.
Thanks Chair. I would like to pull 11.1 and 3 for separate discussion. Thanks.
Thank you. So 11.1, Mr Kirk, and 11.3 are also pulled in this case by councillor Shu. Any other committee members want to put an item? Yes, councillor Davison?
Can I ask a question?
So the question is, is that particular item you want to?
No, I want to ask if I can ask, but my question is for 11.5, the tax levy, can we ask regional councillors questions about the regional tax part or should I have already done that? Like looking at the new tax levy, I would love to hear from regional, okay, then let's talk about that briefly. Thank you.
Right. Because then the item would be to the committee and then we can talk about it. So calling the last time, any other member of the committee would like to separate another item for discussion? Seeing none. So in this situation, I'd like to have a member of committee move a motion to adopt the remainder of the agenda items. Thank you. Councillor Davison and discussion. I'm going to vote all those in favor of councillor Davison's motion to adopt remainder of agenda items. It's carried unanimously, Mr Kirk. And we have no public hearings. Neither do we have any presentations. I don't see any dedications here at this point in time. So we are moving on to the items that have been just been separated and going by the numbering. And first one would be 11.1 is regarding the request for comments about this particular site plan application. At zero, these people could roll. So councillor Michael Shu, you are the one who pulled the item. Yes, the floor is yours.
Thanks Chair. And first of all, I would like to thank the staff for preparing this land use amendment. And I have two questions on this. Considering the upcoming change in land use to industrial, specifically relate to waste management and environmental protection, do we have any plan in place to effectively accommodate this amendment and its intended industrial purpose?
So the question I think is directed to Commissioner Kwan, relating to planning. Commissioner?
Through you, Mr Chair. If I understand the question correctly, councillor, your concern is about the interface of industrial or employment uses and the future residential uses coming to the south. Is that correct?
Councillor?
Yep, yep, yep. Can you just repeat that?
Commissioner?
If I understood the question correctly, councillor, you were referring to the location and I guess the design of the site to handle waste in view of the, sorry, in view of the incoming residential development to the south? And that potential conflict of use? Or did I misunderstand the question?
Yes, I just wanted to refer, is there any plan in place alongside with this plan with any waste management and any environmental production plan alongside with this land use amendment? Because it's going to go for industrial purpose. So just.
Commissioner? Through you, Mr Chair. Part of our normal review includes the full site design and servicing of the property, which includes the proper placement of any waste disposal apparatus or facilities that may require. And if necessary, we would insist that they be either enclosed or simply shielded and away from residential to the extent possible, at the same time providing easy access to and from the site so that there isn't minimizing the truck movements on site.
Okay, clear. And my second question is, is there any specific set of industry that will be restricted from operating on this subject land?
Commissioner?
Sorry, councillor, I didn't hear the full.
Okay, is there any specific set of industry that will be restricted from operating on this subject lands? Is there a regulation or standard to restrict some kinds of industry?
Commissioner?
Through you, Mr Chair. Yes, there are certainly zoning provisions which deal with the future uses of the property. In this particular case, the proposed warehousing and buildings are in full compliance with the zoning bylaw. This is simply the site plan application to facilitate the development going forward. But certainly the zoning bylaw as it was designed was to minimize those types of hazardous uses for this area because it was designed as a prestigious building or business park.
Yes. Councillor, would you like to move a motion if you are satisfied with the answers you are receiving?
Yes, of course. I would like to move a motion of this.
Okay, the motion as stated by the staff referring comments back. Now, thank you. Any discussion on the motion? If not, I'm going to call the vote. All those in favor of councillor Shu's motion to refer all comments back to staff is carried unanimously. Now, before I proceed, I should make it very clear. In addition to the items being pulled by, pulled by committee members, also we need to discuss 11.7, which requires a direction from this committee. And also there's two members' motion now that has been submitted by Mayor West. So those are three items you would continue later on. At this point in time, I'd like to move to item F12 as pulled by councillor Tree. Councillor Tree, please.
Okay, thank you so much, Ms Chair. I do have a question regarding to this, this piece of land is as the corner of Majamak East, close to 404. As I remember, this line that we used to be, my understanding, maybe correct me wrong, used to be close to the Amazon New Deal Centre. Supposedly that area belonged to, from zoning perspective, belonged to industrial or employment area. And for this proposal is for building up around more than 200 townhouses. I was wondering from bylaw perspective, is that going to be a zoning change or something different? I remember this is for employee and industrial area now become a townhouse. It's surprise for me. Thanks.
Thank you for your question. Commissioner, perhaps you can help enlighten committee and also councillor Tree on what has been unfolding in this piece of land?
Thank you, Mr Chair. Your recollection is actually correct, councillor Tree, with respect to the historical design of this area as a part of the business park. However, over the years, it's evolved through the various iterations of our official plan and that development applications. And to the point where now we were issued a minister zoning order in 2020 to allow for the full residential buildout of this community.
Thank you. Councillor Tree?
Okay, because I'm new here, only six months, has any previous councillor or members know this zoning changes? Or just for me, for me, it's a surprise?
Is there's a question directed to committee members or you're directing to?
Committee members here. Mayor and also Deputy Mayor, if you know this changes, for me, for me, it's news. Okay.
Okay, thank you. And I think I saw the hand of Regional Councillor De Paul, Councillor, Regional Councillor De Paul.
Yes, councillor Tree, if I'm not mistaken, this, this property was applied for jointly with, with a Monchon Foundation application. So as a result of the Monchon application, council felt that it was desirable to request the minister to initiate a zoning order to allow for employment conversion that would allow the Monchon Foundation to build institutional rather than employment. And in doing so, the minister also allowed for the residential that you're seeing in this, in this subject item today.
Thank you. Thank you, Regional Councillor De Paul. Councillor Tree? Unless other members want to add anything. Councillor Tree, please.
Okay, I'm looking this, this report here. For the purpose of this meeting, are we going to agree or approve this proposal? Or are we going to judge for our information only?
Commissioner, maybe you can help with this?
Through you, Mr Chair. The application is in full compliance with the minister zoning order. The applicant report presented to you today is for council to provide any comments on the site plan design, which staff would then take back to the applicant for reconsideration. But in terms of the established use, it is in full compliance with the minister zoning order.
Okay, now I do have two comments here. If a clerk can help me, Ms Clerk can help me. The first one is changing the zoning's purpose. If it's already approved by municipal or by council before, I got it. So I'm not going to question anymore because it's approved. My second one is for density. I remember this one is a medium density, if I remember correctly, through the report, to by, by zoonies or by law, do we really need that one close to 404? With that high density? That is my, my question. Townhouse should be fine, majesty. This is the medium density based on our bylaw or city's requirement or region requirement. Is this necessary? That's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments and your questions, Councillor Tree. As the commissioner has stated, and also my, our colleague also mentioned that at the end of the day, there is a minister zoning order, MZO. So it's, at this point in time, we are dealing with the site plan application. So on that note, I still need a member of the committee to move the motion. There is a staff report recommendation, which is listed in the report. There's three of them, A, B, C. Could I have the member, excuse me, in this case, I have a local councillor. And actually, I have councillor Councillor New here raise his hand. I know that you raised your hand as well, Regional Councillor De Paul, but I turn to local councillor first. Councillor Councillor New, please. You raise your hand. You want to move the motion? Thank you. So is Regional Councillor De Paul, you have any questions on the motion that had been just moved by councillor New on adopting the recommendation A, B, C as stated in the staff report?
No, thank you. I was raising my hand to move the motion. I support the staff recommendations.
Right. I thought, I thought so. But I just wanted to make sure I noted you. So we have the councillor news, a motion, recommendation A, B, and C as stated in the report. Oh, sorry. There's discussion on this particular motion. Councillor Sivilis?
Oh, thank you, Mr Chair. I just, I want to thank the staff for this report. But just to, just as an FYI, in keeping with my vote against the MZO, I will be voting against this.
Thank you. So no other comments or questions? I'm calling the vote on this motion moved by councillor New. All those in favor? Against? Is passed, adopted. Mr Kirk? So moving on, we have item 11.3. This is about Beaville Avenue, 16th Avenue to Harry 7th Strettescape corner enhancement. It's been pulled by councillor Michael Shu. Councillor Shu, please.
Thanks Chair. And I would like to fully support the initiative to enhance the building of Beaville Avenue. Considering it's one of the business row alongside with Young and House 7. And I'm also happy to see that Mayor West and two other regional councillors has reached an agreement with York Region regarding the maintenance of Beaville Avenue. So regarding the upcoming reconstruction of Beaville Avenue, I have a question. Will it involve widening the road to accommodate and in, and additional lane for both north bank and south bank of Beaville Avenue? It's just a question for this, if any lane widening?
Sorry, Commissioner, can you help?
Through you, Mr Chair. I would defer the question, technical question on the future road allowance and improvements on Beaville Avenue to our engineering group. Mr Masaro, executive director is online. Perhaps he can answer the question of both the region's future expectations for Beaville.
Second Director? Masaro?
Yep, through the chair to the councillor. In many of these situations, the city is partnering with York Region. Their York Region is expanding the road for a variety of reasons to deal with traffic and other modes of transport for all road users. We don't have the specific details as to their full scope of work at hand. I'm more than happy to provide it following the meeting. We coordinate any work within a regional road allowance and look for opportunities for the region to partner because the city does own infrastructure within their regional road allowance. And that's what this project is about, focusing on the street enhancements within the regional right of way.
Thank you, Executive Directors. Councillor?
So I would like to urge the regional councillor to address this problem because Beaville Avenue is very congested during peak hours. So I urge regional government to do something to relieve the congestion during the peak hours along Beaville Avenue. So the other questions I would like to ask is, when it comes into the cost of improving and the buildingifying the streets, I find that the most expensive one is Brick's Avenue, at 16th Avenue. However, since we all know that 16th Avenue is busier than the other two streets, more than Bricks and also more than Blackmore, okay? So why are we not choosing 16th Avenue to make it more fancier and draw even more attention?
Thank you. Would Commissioner like to address that or?
Through the chair to the councillor. I'm more than happy to bring that back to the region and inquire. What, again, what the city, local municipality does is piggyback on what the region's already doing. If there's a preference to look to enhance one area versus another, happy to take that back. In response to the previous question, just a little bit of additional information. The environmental assessment was completed by the region to accommodate HOV lanes, transit lanes. However, we're not too clear yet on how that's progressing. And there are plans to do some work at 16th.
Thank you, Executive Director Masaro.
What this process, apologies, what this process actually does is, you know, provides council with the heads up and we're looking for the green light to advance the enhancements as part of their work because we received 50% of the funding for those works from the region as a result of their municipal streetsgate partnership program.
Thank you. Councillor Shu?
That's all about my questions. Thanks.
Would you like to move the motion then? Okay. Any other comments? In fact, I did not put this item, but as a former was ex-councillor, I would say this is a win-win scenario as just mentioned by Executive Director Masaro. Because you, the city would only be paying half of what the cost would be. In addition, that although we will have a little bit more maintenance to do, but actually as stated in page five for the staff report, actually, that means that approximately would be 850 square meter less grass cutting. So actually, if you look at on a year-to-year basis, I think that makes a difference in terms of the operational maintenance. And councillor Michael should bring up a good point. In fact, I think the report did comment on particularly 16th Avenue, whereby that particularly north, actually both the north east and north west, they're actually both spaces that are owned by the city could help to facilitate. So as I mentioned, this is something that there's a win-win scenario. I for one am happy to support it and your comments, councillor Shu would be noted by myself. I'm Shu Balimir and other regional councillor. So all those in favor of the motion in front of us? Carried unanimously. Mr Kirk, thank you. So moving on. And we have to deal with all three items that have been pulled. And that would get us to, oh no, sorry, there's one more, actually 11.5 pulled by councillor Davison. Councillor Davison, 11.5, we're dealing with final levy bylaw and tax rates.
Thank you. Can I ask, through you, Mr Chair, I'd like to ask staff. So the final levy, if I can add correctly, is 7.62, which combines 3.72 for the city and 3.9 for the region. Can you explain for myself and maybe residents that are watching, what does the final level levy mean? That 7.62% is now applied for the last half of the year? How does, how does this final levy work when we all know we've paid taxes up until now in 2023?
Thank you for the question. Director Lee, please.
Through the chair to councillor Davidson. So what we've built for up to this point in time is the interim billing. So this report that's in front of you right now actually authorizes us to do the final tax billing. So then the increase will actually be on the next two bills that will be mailed out after this report is approved.
Thank you.
So the 3.72 as well as the 3.9, so those will be reflected in the, the next two tax bills that will be mailed out in June and August, I believe?
Thank you. Councillor Davison?
Thank you. And through you, Mr Chair, just to confirm, there's a half a year left. So the last half of your taxes will increase by six point, or 7.62, if I understand correctly.
Director Lee?
Through the chair to councillor Davidson. So the 6.72, it's cumulative. So we're talking about 3.9% on the regional portion of the tax bill and then 3.72% on the city's portion of the tax bill. And between the two of them, they combine to be about three quarters of the total tax bill. So it's, it's not cumulative, it's a percentage of the respective tax bill.
Thank you for the answer, Director Lee. Councillor Davison?
Thank you. And through Mr Chair, I would like to ask any of the three members of regional councils sitting on this council. I see there's a 1% funding for North subway extension through the region. This is new, as far as I know. My question is, it's not new? We've been paying it for a while? I guess my question is, are you confident? What's the mechanism for collecting this particular tax and ensuring that it goes to what it is intended to go to? Where are you confident that the mechanism for this percentage tax just for the subway is being collected and kept as it should be?
Mayor West, I would like to answer the question.
Okay, so the, the 1% levy on the regional tax bill is spread out over the entire region. So everybody pays it, no matter where you live in the region of York. And it's, it is to pay for the regional share of the Young North subway extension. So it will be separated from the rest of the tax bill. It doesn't go into general revenues. And it's designed specifically to pay for that, the purpose. We actually have a similar thing in Richmond Hill in a lot of ways because we have a capital sustainability levy that's specifically designed for that one purpose. And it goes, it's not, you know, it's not mixed up with the rest of the tax revenue. It stays separate and it's specifically for capital. So, so I hope that answers the question. The, the region of York pays for a portion of the Young North subway extension. We're not, that is yet to be negotiated, the exact amount, but we have a pretty good idea of what that's going to be. The province pays for most of it and the, the province and federal government pay for most of it and then we pay for the remainder. So this 1% is to pay for that, our share of it. If I may though, I want to, I want to just be clear and Ms Lee said it probably better than I'm going to say it. But those two rates, the, the rate at the region and the rate at the municipality, you don't add those together. So it isn't a 6% or 7% or whatever. It's whatever, like a 3 point whatever percent on the regional share of the total tax bill and whatever we, our 3 point whatever it is on the municipal share of the tax bill. So it, you don't add, it's not a cumulative addition thing. So, okay.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mayor West. Now, I also see Regional Councillor Paul raise your hand. Do you want to ask a question later on?
Can I just finish? Sorry.
Oh, sorry.
My apologies. Three, Mr Chair. I just wanted to say, any opportunity, I feel that we can explain to residents how it works because honestly, if I'm confused or have questions, I'm sure many do. So thank you. Those are my questions.
Oh, thank you. Thank you, Councillor Davison. It's not meant to interrupt, but I was seeing Regional Councillor De Paul also raise his hand after your question being raised. So I thought he might have a point to make. Yeah, that's why.
Thank you, Mr Chair.
Yes.
I was gonna pipe in to answer, help answer councillor Davidson's question, but I couldn't have said it better than the first. I was gonna uh pipe in to answer, help and answer Councillor Davidson's question, but I couldn't have said it better than the mayor did.
Right, right. That's what I thought you meant to do it. That's why uh Councillor Davidson does uh recognize. If I may, not to delay the point, but actually, uh Mayor West made a very good point uh that the uh the two, the two point nine percent uh for the operating budget uh that was set by Regional Council, uh plus the one percent for the dedicated uh towards Youngs uh North Subway, uh which is share, a twenty-seven percent of the share of the region, uh in addition to the province at uh at the federal uh as well, um that um the with the uh uh the uh the local uh as indicated directly. So the two are not cumulative. Uh that's very important to to note. Uh in fact, um if I may share, based on my rough calculations, uh could be confirmed by Director Lee maybe at later point in time. If you take the share, which is the fifty-one percent of um our city of Richmond Hill, public tax goes to region. And also twenty-six percent of our total public tax which paid to the city. Uh I looked at some time ago, the total impact and the region and the city comes to overall two point nine six percent of the public tax, but subject to uh subject to the directly, but roughly around three percent. Um that's when you two together. So directly maybe have something to add. Just to be absolutely clear.
To the Chair, that's correct. Uh we did develop those figures uh during the time when we were doing the operating budget. And it was roughly about three percent when we combined the regional increase as well as the municipal municipal increase.
So I hope that helps. Um my calculation is two point nine six percent and directly is three percent, so very close. Thank you. Uh I have uh also Councillor Tree want to raise some question or comment. Councillor Tree, please.
Okay, thank you so much. I I I also, before I start this, I'll I'll also uh want extract uh eleven point four later on. So my question regarding to the tax rates, I remember in the beginning this year, we already discussed about all the uh tax rates, right? I think it's three point something. Is this detailed information or is additional?
Uh uh direct, Director D.
Gigi, is this?
Director Lee, we'd like to respond to Councillor Tree's question.
Through the Chair to Councillor Tree, I I believe your question is on agenda item eleven point four, which is the local improvement project?
No, still for tax.
You mentioned about eleven point four, but you.
Eleven point four, I believe, yeah. There will be later on, but this question is for the tax as well. I go to our Councillor uh Harry Davidson's question regarding the tax here. So this is for eleven point five for levy, eleven point four will ask later on after answers question. For eleven point five, my question is here, for the levy of the rates, tax rates. It will be additional from beginning of this year. We have the past tax rates for this year, operation budget, whatever. That's a three point. And here I see another three point nine. Is this another three point nine tax increase? Or is it follow the same one before beginning of this year?
Through the Chair to Councillor Tree, this is the same tax rate increase. So in the beginning of the year, council approved the three point seven two, we're now billing the three point seven two onto the tax bills for the final levy.
Okay, got it. I thought it could be another one result, that's gonna be a okay, right, I finish up. Uh I'll wait for my next three point, eleven point four.
Sorry, uh eleven point four, Councillor Tree has not been pulled. Yeah, it was um already passed on consent based on the motion that we adopted unanimously. Is that your understanding as well? So we're dealing with eleven point five now.
Okay, got it.
Okay, thank you. You have no other question, comments? Uh I have in the speaking order, Mayor West. Mayor West, please. You, oh, you did raise your hand earlier. That's why I recognize you. Okay, good. Okay. Um now, um any other comments? Uh I know we are talking about property taxes, we all pay for it. Um so obviously, um this is something I do understand. Uh we need to make it very clear to not just ourselves, but to members of public, uh what it is all about. So thank you, Councillor Davidson, for pulling it. Um now, I do need someone to move a motion, though, with uh Councillor Davidson, oh uh Councillor Davidson moved the motion. As stated in the staff report.
Yes, thank you very much. Thank you.
Uh well, in fact, uh I believe it is already moved, that's why I've been in discussion. So all those in favor? Carry unanimously, I'm happy to say. So um moving on, um we do have a correspondence coming in from uh the presidency of Cosmo Music, uh regarding a request um to deem an event as municipally significant as called Cosmo Fest. And um I would turn to the local ward councillor, Councillor New, and because uh community direction is leader, so it's a local councillor. Um it's uh I would like to bring this matter to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um in response to the request, I'm more than happy to support it. And um so I have a motion um with the assistant. Uh thank you Deputy Mayor and also a clerk. I have a motion, please put it on the screen. Um A B C, which is A to receive the ladder. And the second is uh is to support um that uh this is a municipal significance event. Um which I'm referring is the Cosmo Fest. And also there's a C um part of it, which is um, you know, with all these kind of requests, if it's deemed significant, um will have uh staff to have delegated authority to approve it and don't need to come to council every single time. So that basically my uh my motion on the floor. Um hope um, you know, my colleagues will will be in support of this. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councillor New. I um do have Mayor West, uh you want to speak to this? Mayor West, please.
I just quickly, I'll take the opportunity to say, uh you know, it it's, I totally support this and I'm I'm glad that we're you know, hopefully going to be able to just do this in the in the future. Um this Cosmo Fest has been going on for many years and unfortunately, over the last couple of years, it's been uh to, you know, put on hold because of the pandemic. It is an awesome event. And uh it really is amazing to see a a company that's truly a leader in that, in their space. Uh it's right here in Richmond Hill, uh putting on an event like this uh of their own loishion. And I I just think this is great and uh I um I look forward to frankly to being there on the third. So um I'm I'm pleased that we're gonna get this done for them.
Thank you. Um Councillor Civilis, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just have a couple of questions. I I do support this, but I just have a couple of questions through you to um whichever staff member would like to respond. Number one. What deems this a municipal municipal municipally significant event? What what's the reasoning for that? Through you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Your question, Commission, Commission. Okay, Mr. Kirk, you want to deal with it? Yeah. Mr. Kirk.
Thank you. Uh through the Chair to the Councillor. Uh a municipally significant event is actually a definition by the AGCO, that is their own definition. In order for an event to have uh provide liquor at an event, they require council approval or through delegated authority from uh a municipality. So there's no specific definition, it's just the AGCO requires a council or delegated authority from from any municipality to deem something to be municipally significant.
Thank you, Mr. Kirk. Councillor.
Thank you. I I understand. Um I I I know that this is a huge event and it's been going on for a long time. I I just have to say, and I'm not going to vote against this, I just have to say, I don't, I don't specifically think, believe that this is a municipally significant event. And I just wanted to put that into the record. Um there's, it's run by Cosmo, it's not in any way run by the city. Secondly, um with regards to number B. Obtain the special occasion permit from the Alcohol and Gaming Commission of Ontario to be utilized at Cosmo Fest event. Again, through through you, Mr. Chair, if it's to our deputy clerk. Um what assurances do we have from Cosmo that this area is going to be fenced off? And only um only those over nineteen will be allowed in.
Thank you. Your question, Mr. Kirk.
Uh it's through the Chair of the Councillor. So based on the letter that we received from Cosmo Music, they indicate what um I wouldn't say assurances, but what they're setting up for the event in there. Um they do have police or paid duty, they also have paramedics that will be there. Uh I'm not sure about fencing things off, is certainly there's significant amount of people that are there and and there may not be uh fencing that will be put up, but they have through their letter stated the various um things and and people that will be there to ensure that it's a safe event uh for everyone that that participates.
Thank you.
Thank you. And uh uh before uh I bring it back to uh councillor, I have City Manager. City Manager, want to speak on this matter?
Through you, uh Mr. Chair, I actually would like the Commissioner of Community Services uh to advise council about what mechanisms are in place and regarding the fencing issue for the alcohol area.
Thank you, City Manager. Uh Commissioner Steele, please.
Through you, Mr. Chair. So um basically by deeming it significant, as the clerk said, you're allowing, you're endorsing that they can have liquor at the event, but that is then regulated by the Alcohol and Gaming Commission through their permit system. So they will ensure that the safety mechanisms that they require to issue the liquor license permit are in place.
Thank you, Commissioner. Now back to you, uh Councillor Civilis.
Uh thank you, Commissioner Steele. As long, do we, through you, Mr. Chair, do we have any mechanism that we check on that? Through through the day, uh you know, or is it just okay, over to you AGCO? I don't mean to flip, but
uh through.
Commissioner Steele.
Sorry, through you, Mr. Chair. Um so no, we we wouldn't enforce it, it would then be enforced by the police through the Alcohol and Gaming Commission permit.
Thank you for answering.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um okay, I mean, I'm I'm not going to vote against this. But I I don't specifically deem this event as being municipally significant. That's my opinion. And um I would urge Cosmo, if they're listening online, uh to ensure that this particular area is patrolled and fenced off the way it is supposed to. We have um when we have liquor um areas, uh liquor licensed areas at uh say, for instance, a Canada Day event, it is a separate fenced-off event and only uh only those who are allowed to imbue alcohol are allowed into that event. So I would hope and trust that Cosmo will will be will be doing that as well. Otherwise, um I suppose with YRP there, that's that's an extra thing. But we have to be mindful of that because if we deem it a municipally significant event and God forbid, there should be something that occurs, we could also be held liable. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment and questions. Uh I also have, what, when Councillor Davidson?
Thank you. To you, Mr. Chair, is it possible for staff to ask what the guardrails are on this alcohol license and just get back to us? I I I won't vote against this either, but that's the first thing I thought of because alcohol Cosmo appeals to kids, people of all ages, they provide music lessons and one has to assume there's going to be a lot of kids at this. I would really, I support the questions by um my fellow councillor to find out what the guardrails are to make sure that liquor portion is well, um I don't want to say policed, but well monitored. Um that said, I could, I think that Cosmo is a municipal municipally significant um institution here. I remember when it's just a tiny little music store and if you talk to anyone at Cosmo, the greatest rockers, the greatest violinists, the greatest musicians musicians to walk the earth have come to Cosmo to get custom-made um instruments. Anyway, it's a really exciting place and I'm proud that it's part of Richmond Hill. But I have the same concerns as um Councillor Silivitz. I really would just like to confirm. I mean, is it possible to confirm that after we approve it? I don't want to hold everything up because June third is very close. But I wouldn't mind some reassurances. Thank you.
Thank thank you for your question uh and comment, uh Councillor Davidson. Um City Manager, you have something to respond to or add to?
Through you, uh Mr. Chair. Um just to uh provide some context uh for that, uh events like Canada Day and Rib Fest that the city hosts are also family events. Um the uh Liquor Licensing Board of Ontario is very strict and specific about uh how to manage uh the sale of alcohol and consumption of alcohol at those events. So if you're familiar with those events, uh Cosmo will be subject to the same uh high level of standard for their event. Uh so there's no difference, if I can be candid with council, between uh this being on Cosmo's private property or Rib Fest and Canada Day being on city property. Um and and Commissioner Steele is correct, um Cosmo has uh indicated, stated to us all the safety mechanisms that they have in place in order to do that. And uh and she's correct in that York region police are on site throughout the entire event. So um the the other thing to let you know, because we issue liquor license permits on city property. Um you know, we certainly um hold them to a high standard, you know, prior to the event to make sure uh they're in compliance. You know, we're we're partnered with Cosmo in a number of areas. So I hope that provides you some level of comfort uh for this.
Thank you, uh City Manager, providing the context. Um now, back to you, uh Councillor Davidson.
Thank you. Thank you for that. And um that's all my questions. I support this. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other committee members of the questions, comments to make? Oh, sorry, uh Regional Councilor DePaul, I see your hand. Regional Councillor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um I agree with Councillor Davidson. I I think Cosmo is really a uh a a unique business that that is significant here in Richmond Hill. Um I I took uh piano lessons in when it was in the historic downtown, just a small shop in the late seventies and and then uh and then the young at Sixteenth for 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 many years and it's truly a Richmond Hill business that's grown and become successful, is internationally known. And the it's it's not a harmful precedent to endorse their event because um any other business would be hard-pressed to come forward and and uh match the the history that that uh Cosmos had in Richmond Hill and and their success. Um you know, and and if there are others that have in attributed uh, you know, over that length of time in Richmond Hill and and you know, how many uh young people went through there and and today can play an instrument because of them. Uh then if an equal claim can be made by another business, then uh we could, we, you know, the council could also allow them uh special occasion permit through this process by declaring it of significance. So I have confidence in the AGCO and and their uh policies and regulations and their enforcement of them. So uh I don't don't think we'll um, you know, we'll have any issues there, but I have the added assurance that such a a longtime presence and 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 partner in in the Richmond Hill community with with such a a fabulous reputation. I I don't think, I I think they would go above and beyond even the requirements of the AGCO to to make to share that uh their event is is safe and uh and fun for all. So thank you, Mr. Jarrett. I support the recommendation.
Thank you. Um I see no other comments and questions, uh but as Chair, I I honestly feel duty bound because it's an issue that raised by uh Councillor Civilis. Um uh she's concerned about whether it's potential liability, if I heard it right. If I may, uh we do have city solicitor here, uh just for the comfort and assurances that for community members, members of public. Um I would like to get a a comment uh from our city solicitor on the issue relating to uh any potential exposure liability on, um I believe the concern is about uh on B, on the motion. Um which is, as Kirk explains, actually municipal significance is a term used by the Alcohol and Gaming Commission, not the city. Uh so city solicitor, um would you help um verify uh insofar as whether the city might be under any kind of uh exposure due to the uh adoption or perhaps and this uh C or B uh conquering or deem this as a municipal significant event?
Uh yeah, Mr. Chair, uh to you. Um the Alcohol Gaming Commission Frontier requires the municipality to provide confirmation that it's a municipal significance. Um would that implicate us in the event that there is an issue with the event? Would that implicate us in the event that there is an issue with the event? I suppose there is a low liability, a low risk liability that somebody would conclude the city if there is an issue. Again, this is governed by the Alcohol Gaming Commission of Ontario. They have their own requirements. Anyone who wants a liquor license has to comply with their requirements. So certainly, anytime there's an event that has liquor, there is some liability. But it's a requirement of the AGCO to have a permit. And so it is a low risk, but certainly there is some risk, but it's a very low risk, I would believe, for the municipality.
Thank you for your answer. I hope it helps to clarify. And following that, I do have Mayor West for the second round.
Thank you. So I appreciate the discussion and respect the opinions. And I think we've got some good information here today. But I just, I just want to concentrate on, this is not the first time that they've had Cosmo Fest. It's been going on for years. It's a great event. And, you know, I hear from residents all the time that they're interested in being able to participate in great events in their in their backyard. And this is in Richmond Hill. Cosmo is a leader across North America in what they do. I mean, they're a very innovative and excellent local business. And, you know, I think the thing is that all of the guardrails and all of the regulations, I mean, all we're doing is saying that, you know, they can enter the door and, you know, and and apply for liquor license. We're not, we're not doing any of the regulation around the liquor license itself. But as far as I know, in any of the years that we, they've had this in the past, they've had some really excellent acts there. The huge amount of entertainment and of a varied nature. And I don't recall having ever having any problems. They run the event very, very well. And I have absolutely every confidence that between all the regulatory requirements and the reputation of this outstanding Richmond Hill business itself, this is going to be yet another great event that we've missed in the last three years because of the pandemic. And, you know, this is a, you know, a highlight in our, one of the many highlight events that we have in our city. So I, for one, am very happy that we can support this. And also that we can, you know, rely on the other agencies to do their part to make sure that everything runs as smoothly as it should be. So anyway, that's an awesome ring.
That must be.
It's it's kind of like, it's maybe that 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 song itself will be played at Cosmo Fest. I don't know who the artist is, but, you know, they have the power to to draw artists like that. So anyway, thanks for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor West. Obviously, it seems to be a musical reminder that it's almost time to call a vote on the motion unless councillor New, you have something to say before we vote for the motion. No? Okay. So as Mayor West said, I think this is a good discussion. So that the items A, B, C have been tabled here, all those in favor of the motion. And I'm happy to say, Mr. Kirk, is carried unanimously. Now, turning to other business, we have two motions, member motion by Mayor West. The first one is regarding Government Ontario to expedite regulations affecting housing supply crisis. Mayor West.
Okay, thank you. So just to give some context, both of these motions are coming out of the Ontario Big City Mayor meeting that was had a little while ago. And the O B C M is asking member municipalities to support this motion, to send a strong message as we have in the past through O B C M to the provincial government. The first one that we're dealing with is, in a nutshell, is basically we've got all these different requirements now from the province and they've been passed. We've got our target of twenty seven thousand units, but there's still a great deal of uncertainty from, in particular, Bill twenty three, that we don't have the details of the regulations and how this is going to be applied and what are going to be the ramifications. I'm disappointed, to be honest with you, in that we we met with, O B C M met with government, A M O has done some lobbying. Minister Clark came and spoke to me a little while ago. I expressed some of the concerns that we had at that time. And I get it. This is a very big piece of legislation with a lot of moving parts, but time is ticking. We've committed to our our pledge of twenty seven thousand units and we, you know, we want to get housing built in Richmond Hill and we want to get housing built that's affordable. But we're coming up very shortly to our, the beginning of our twenty twenty four budget cycle. We're going to be starting to make decisions and we're going to be starting to make decisions on capital spending. And we don't fully know yet what the ramifications are going to be and how much money we're going to have to be spending. And the same goes, I should add, at the region. So we need these details to be given to us shortly. We we need to know where we're at before we start committing to spending money on growth related infrastructure going forward. So this motion simply is asking for for the government to to get that done as quickly as possible. And then, you know, we can go from there.
Thank you, Mayor West. Any discussion, questions, comments? Seeing none, I'd like to call a vote on Mayor West's motion. Thank you for bringing that forward. All those in favor. I'm happy to say, Mr. Kirk, is carried unanimously. Thank you. And it's also another motion by councillor West. It's within the housing, but the focus is on increased data capacity. So Mayor West.
Okay, thank you. So again, this is related to the same what I've I've just said. Although I think one of the, also the important details that we still don't have as much clarity as I would like to see is, you know, we've got all these changes coming down from the province. We're trying to increase the number of housing units and especially affordable housing units that is being built. But if you can't measure it, you can't monitor it. And so we're asking the Ontario government to also look at funding to increase our ability to find a way across the province to measure and and in a in a uniform way, the build out of and the success, hopefully, of this this legislation or alternatively, the areas where the legislation is not doing what it's supposed to be doing as quickly as it as it should be doing it so that changes can be made. This is very big changes in the planning regime in Ontario. And I think it's very, very important for municipalities to be able to have a uniform and effective way to monitor the progress. So basically, this motion is again coming from Ontario Big City Mayor's caucus. And we're just asking to have council endorse this so that we can provide a unified front in our ask to the province.
Thank you. Mayor West, any questions, comments by community members? Councillor Silverland, please.
Thank you. I fully support this as as in the previous one. I just have one question. Through you, Mr. Chair, to Mayor West. Do we know what happens if the province refuses to fund? And where is that funding going to come from? Is it going to come from the singular municipalities or from the regions? Do you know?
Mayor West, thank you.
Actually, well, that's a good question, a very good question. And I would have to say if it was not funded, you can add that to the list of things we don't know about how we're going to implement this this legislation. So I I think one of the values of this is to is to also have some leadership on how we're going to we're going to monitor it. Because if the data from Richmond Hill is consistent with the data from, you know, Ottawa, Pickering, Ajax, whatever, then we can start to, you know, see trends. We can start to, you know, make a better understanding of of the effectiveness of what's happening on the ground. So, but it's a good question.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate that. I guess we just should be keeping our eyes on that, make sure that the funding is actually provided. Thank you. Those are, that's the end of my questions.
Thank you. Any other question or comments by other community members? Seeing none. Yeah, I would say, Mayor West, thank you. And also with the Ontario Big City Mayor for bringing that up because it's very important that there's a lot of numbers being thrown around in terms of of what the figures should be of under the one point five million homes should be across Ontario in the next eight years and so on. So any data, particular sharing would give more evidence base support to any kind of statement on whatever level he's talking about. So no further comment questions. I'd like to call the vote on Mayor West's motion, which we all see in front of us, and all those in favor. Again, Mr. Kirk, I'm happy to say it is carried unanimously. And so we don't need to have any bylaw passed at this particular meeting, immediate meeting. And I need a member to move a motion for German. Yes, councillor Silverland, any discussion? All those in favor carry unanimously. Have a happy.